Well, to start off with, I believe Cherie has some hand sanitizer and that mask and those sort of things, if anybody needs one or wants one, by all means, just let us know. And with that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and at this time, I'll call the May 28, 2020 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? And the members of the Senate.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right. Madam Secretary, we have five members, we have a quorum. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Smooth.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Post. Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the February 11, 2020 meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye. Meeting, the minutes for the February 11 meeting are approved. I don't believe we have any old business, so on to new business. PB, the first item, PB 20-04, Currituck County Flood Ordinance Tax Amendment, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1, Section 1.7.2, to reference the most recent effective date of the flood insurance study and digital flood insurance rate map, and include auto adoption language for all revisions thereto after January 1, 2021. And I keep looking over here and nobody's there, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This text amendment is initiated by the county and is necessary to continue the county's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And participation in NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, is very important because it allows property owners to obtain federal flood insurance on eligible properties. Also, there are federal grants and loans available through participation and federal disaster assistance. You may recall that the county went through a flood map adoption process a couple of years ago that was rather lengthy process, and for the majority of the flood insurance rate map panels, those flood map panels for the county, those were adopted and effective as of December 21, 2018. And we're back now to revise that date because we actually do share a few firm panels with Dare County, and this particular text amendment application is to revise the effective date to June 19, 2020 because of those few panels. We've basically been put on the clock by FEMA to adopt the new flood insurance study and those revised firms within six months, and the end of six months is June 19, 2020. I was supposed to glance to that slide earlier, sorry. All right, so here's just, I just kind of wanted to show you the maps that are being, that were effective, that are part of Currituck and Dare. You can see the outline here of the Currituck Dare line, and it runs down the Currituck Sound.
Thing on our side.
Oh, you don't?
No, we got a black screen.
All right, we got it.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's the map showing the Currituck Dare line, and you can see all those map panels. The line runs right through the Currituck Sound, so there are four panels that we share. And you can see that three of the panels are basically just water and marsh. And then on that other, that, this panel right here, 9951, there are a few of the first properties when you come into Corolla that are on that, that map panel. So it's some Pine Island properties on there. So the proposed text amendment will be to revise our, our date to June 19, 2020 instead of December 21, 2018, and add the auto adoption language, which is that all revisions thereafter, after January 1, 2021, shall be incorporated by reference. And that's something that the state, the emergency management folks that we, we deal with at the state level highly recommend, that auto adoption language, to keep us basically from having to revise the ordinance to change a date in the future if they do have map, mapping changes.
We don't have to do this again?
Correct. But it doesn't change the public input process of how the new maps are designed and rolled out, and how, and the state actually takes that through the public process, through coordination with FEMA, so.
It would kind of put a protection in place for the date not running out.
Right, so basically, the state runs through that public input, or public process, and the maps are advertised in the Federal Register, and then, once that's done, the county, we're just put on the clock, okay, within six months, you need to adopt these maps that have already gone through this process, already, appeals have already been heard and resolved, and these are your maps. So that's what that is. And then that, that last strike through, it's just not necessary to have that language since we have the auto adoption language that captures that too, so we're requesting to strike subsequent letter of map revisions and/or physical map revisions shall be adopted within three months. We won't need that language anymore. So staff recommends approval because the requested text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan, including development goal number one, to protect and conserve the area's natural beauty and coastal resources as the county's greatest asset for economic development and a high quality of life. Goal number seven, to exercise caution, foresight, and common sense in dealing with the risks of coastal development. Natural hazards area CAMA management goal, conserve and maintain barrier dunes, beaches, floodplains, and other coastal features for their natural storm protection functions and natural resources. And then policy NH1, which is the county recognize the risk to life and property that exists within special flood hazard areas that may be inundated during major storm events. The county will continue taking measures to mitigate these risks and will avoid taking any action in these areas that materially increases risk to life and property. And staff suggests that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it continues the county's participation in the NFIP that enables property owners to purchase flood insurance protection, and it minimizes damage to public and private property due to flooding.
This, of course, enables people to purchase flood insurance. Having this come, you know, bring this up to date or allows the flood insurance purchasing.
Right, it continues to allow.
Right.
Policies to be initiated and continued under the NFIP, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions for staff?
And this would have been brought to you, I think, at your April meeting, and unfortunately, we, you know, we've had this public health situation, so, and this is the main reason that this was a special called meeting tonight, because this needed to be taken care of. But had we been working under normal circumstances, it would have come to you guys in, in April, and then on to the board at one of their meetings in May. So it feels rushed, but that's because of the situ, public health situation.
I understand.
I'll open the floor for public comment if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this. I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment. Are there any other questions or discussion on this at this time?
I want to make sure when we make a motion that we're including the strike through, you know, this additional.
So the motion would basically be to request to amend the UDO, Chapter 1, Section 1.7.2, to reference the most recent effective date of flood insurance study and digital flood insurance rate map, and include auto adoption language for all revisions thereto, but then we need to word item one, general provisions be amended by adding the following underlying language and deleting the struck through language. We need to put that in the motion as well, correct? I think.
To make it, to make it the best motion, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I don't need to, that January 1, 2021 date, I probably don't need to reference that, I just need to reference.
The item one with, and that last revision of the strike through of the last sentence.
Okay.
Correct.
But I think if I make a motion talking about the underlying language and strike through it, I don't have to read all of it.
Right.
That whole thing.
I'll let you make the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Well, on that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1, Section 1.7.2, to reference the most recent effective date of the flood insurance study and digital flood insurance rate map, and include auto adoption language for all revisions thereto. General provisions shall be amended by adding the following underlying language and deleting the struck through language as defined in, as noted in item one.
Okay. Is that?
That you're looking for.
Just, I think, just go ahead and also state in item one, striking the last sentence of item one.
And in item one, that was duly noted, striking the last sentence in Section B.
Correct.
Is that right? All right. We have a motion?
What, and then your statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Oh, yeah. In that it is consistent and reasonable.
With the 2006 Land Use Plan?
Yeah, with the 2006 Land Use Plan, sorry, the 2006 Land Use Plan.
Is that with the four? Here it is.
Bottom two dots up there.
The bottom.
This request is reasonable and in the public's interest, it continues the county's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program that enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance protection against losses for flooding. Two, it minimizes damage to public and private property due to flooding.
All right. That's it?
That covers it. Sorry. I knew there was a lot going on with the date and everything.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Yes, sir. We have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none? All right, well, motion, motion passes.
Good job, Brian. It's been a while.
Yeah. It's going to take us a minute to get back in the groove here. All right. Next item, PB 20-07, Currituck County Alternative Water Supply for Fire Flow Tax Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6.2.4, to allow use of water shuttling as an alternative means of meeting fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by the county water system, and to amend references in Chapters 4, 5, and 6 from fire marshal to fire code official. And Jenny, again, take, take it away.
All right, thank you. So as you just read, this, this text amendment is initiated by the county at the direction of the Board of Commissioners in order to allow use of alternative water supply, water shuttling, it's commonly referred to, as a means to meet required fire flow standards for properties not serviced by county water. And again, as you, as you mentioned, it also proposes to revise the term fire marshal to fire code official to be consistent with the North Carolina Fire Code. Here's the language in, in Part B that adds, I'm sorry, this didn't, there's some weirdness going on on that, that third line, but, "Development not serviced by the county water system shall provide a supply of water for firefighting purposes in accordance with the following standards." And so we proposed to add Part B, fire department mobile water supply approved by the fire code official, or any combination of the above or an alternative means approved by the fire code official. Basically, it just gives more flexibility, it's not pinned down to just those specific sources. The fire flow is required for, for certain new development, it has to meet the fire flow requirement per the fire code official, and the, the use of a water shuttle can potentially reduce a size of a pond or a requirement for a pond depending on the capability of the fire department and whether or not they are able to shuttle the water to that site. At this time, I'm going to ask Lori to give a little bit of background on this particular text amendment.
Yes, this text amendment was discussed at the board's retreat in February, and then later on, it came out that we were directed to, to include some flexibility to allow water shuttling in our UDO. But this has been an issue that we've been dealing with for my tenure here, I can remember this. Without this flexibility, we were limited, especially with minor subdivisions and family subdivisions and areas that are not, this is once again, areas that are not serviced by county water supply, you know, developers were having to put in ponds to be able to meet the fire flow number. We do have Bill Nunes here, which is our chief building inspector, and our fire, official fire code official, if you want to get into some, some technical numbers, but this water shuttling, he had not been able to consider the capabilities of the fire department, if they had the potential for, for shuttling and fighting a fire, he'd not been able to consider that in, in the fire flow calculations he had for minor subdivision, so we were requiring, essentially, we were requiring ponds or cisterns or something there on the property. This would allow, and if somebody wasn't willing to put it in, it would limit, it would limit what they were able to do with their property. This provides that flexibility if a fire department is able to meet a certain standard with their shuttling. It gives Bill more flexibility as far as, specifically, and it's really geared toward, more toward residential. So. Juanita, you look like you have some.
I have questions.
Okay.
I do have some questions. I guess one of them being, if a home is, has road furniture, how, I mean, how far does that hose allow them to, like, how far would that hose? There's a pond, let's say that there's a pond between two houses that has a 250-foot set path off the property, off a main road, a main road that the truck can sit on. Does it still require the, would you still require the hard tack or the?
It depends where that sand pile is or the pond.
Okay.
So if for some reason that sand pile was close to the road where they could access it, then you'd be all right with it. If it's back on the property, they need the road to access it. So more likely, they're not going to run the, because of drawl, that, that pile is right with the pond. It's not very, typically about 12 feet away from it.
Right.
You know, they're not going to put it 200 yards away because they, they can't get the suction from the pond.
That makes sense. Okay, so they, they would just have to have something that the truck would be able to not sink into the property or anything.
Yes, they would.
Would, would somebody like myself, who wanted to possibly lower my homeowner's insurance, would I be able to put a, come to you and say, listen, I want to put a fire pond on my property? Do I need to have a certain size for my house size? Or how would that be required? I mean, if I wanted to do something to lower my insurance, put a pond on my property, how would that work?
Well, it still had to be standards for the size of the house and the distances, depending on, like I said, for most typical houses, we already have 30 feet between where our setback was, so you're looking at 750 gallons, so that pond would have to be designed for that 750 gallons if you approve. In order for you to get something like that, we had a gentleman on our pond, had a tank in the ground, they wanted us to certify, and we said we couldn't certify, you'd have to get an engineer to certify, delete all that, and of course, allow fire department access to it, and never heard anything more about it, so I don't know if you follow through.
So I would have to actually get a, an engineer to certify the pond size?
Yeah, because I talked to you about that drought in the work session.
Right.
It has to be designed for a 50-year drought.
Okay.
I can't do, we can't run those calculations.
Right, okay, okay, that makes sense. That was just some of my questions.
Are the family subdivisions exempt from the fire code?
Technically, no.
Technically, no.
We've worked with them over the past, James, former fire marshal has.
Where would it, where would it stand today, under the current rules, without this?
If you ask the fire code, I'd say they have to meet, but we've worked with them on it because typically they don't have more than five lots of, of time lots.
Less than that now?
Yeah, less than that now, it's three.
So that's, we've got down to that three, fire code kitchen, three lots. So I've got like a change. In the past, it used to be five, so James worked with them at it. I kind of kept that gun off of, off of that.
So, so major subdivisions require a water line regardless? A minor subdivision?
Fire hydrant, I mean.
I don't, a major subdivision requires a water line.
We have a distance formula that if, if a major subdivision is outside of that distance, they do not have to have a, a water line, but they would have to then have, be held to a higher standard because they are a major subdivision, and have, like Bill was talking about, out in South Mills Road.
Engineered certified type pond with the dry hydrant.
Correct.
Okay.
But the majority of our major subdivisions that we're seeing right now, they are within that distance and want county water.
Right.
So.
So I was, what I was leaving, leading to is it seems like this would mainly affect a minor subdivision, not as much as a family subdivision or a major subdivision, it's really going to have a, more of a major effect on them. Something that falls in the middle.
Exactly. Those three, that three lot minor subdivisions that we're seeing a lot of, in, in certain areas of the county, East Ridge Road is one that is, is coming to mind, but that these minor subdivisions, so that they can continue to be able to build houses, you know.
Would this change anything for a 10-acre subdivision?
Although a 10-acre, we call them the 10-acre exempt subdivisions, they, by North Carolina State statute, they are exempt from subdivision regulations, they are not exempt from the North Carolina State Building Code, and then within that is the fire code. So they would still have to provide some type of firefighting capabilities in a 10-acre exempt.
So with, if this were to be in place, and a 10-acre subdivision came about, they would be okay for the first two lots? The third one would trigger either the fire pond, a fire hydrant of some kind?
That third lot.
Or someone has to sign off on shuttling?
Or sign off on shuttling for, that's what we've run into where we've allowed these, the 10-acre lots to build the first two lots, hoping that the developer earns enough money that he can put the pond in for a third, and we've run into the situation where the third lot come up, they don't want to put it in, and we've denied building permit, of course, and, and we also have a minor subdivision that's, that kind of has the same thing going, but that was our thing. We recognized the fire code, six years ago, the actual fire marshal came, came down and talked to commissioners about this, and they said basically, the first two lots will be exempt, but that third lot, once it goes up, you need me to find them. We've had that happen, and we're having it happen right now, so this will give them an opportunity to go to the fire department, fire chief, and have them say he's able to supply that water by show, and then we're not going to put the pond or water line down the road.
And whether it's a, a pond or shuttle, there's still a cost to, to the county. If someone installs a pond, you have to keep it weeded and inspected and all that, so there's a cost with that.
It's laboring it on the developer to provide that maintenance to the homeowners association ways within the UDO right now. They signed an agreement with the fire department, again, to give them access to that pond. The downside of this is it always is all.
Or they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
They don't, yeah, the fire.
Cover of sun and mud and all that, and you can't pump, yeah.
And because the fire department has that pond, when the department attorney comes in and runs tests, they want them to run that test, they got to get that drawl, they have to make sure it's working.
Right.
Or, or that's going to drive the torns off because you don't have the available water.
So the shuttle system gives you guys really more control, as far as knowing that this is, you know, water that's going to be able to pump and?
It gives flexibility, but it has a downside, as I said, manpower.
There's more costs with that.
Well, I see somewhat where you're headed in, if a major subdivision is done right now, pretty much all of the fire hydrants put in, the lines installed, everything, all of those costs are on the developer.
Yes.
If a fire pond is put in, all of that cost of that installation of the pond, the dry hydrant, all of that cost is on the developer again, or the builder. If you shift to a shuttling situation, as you mentioned a while ago, you may have to buy more tanker trucks and those sort of things, that is a cost on the county now.
Taxpayers.
Not, the developer's not going to buy a tanker truck and donate it to the county, I doubt. So there's money involved both ways, but it's. So there's money involved both ways, but it's, one, the county's paying for it, one, the developer's paying for it.
But what we're voting on really is, we're not voting on the dollars. We're voting on the, the, the UDO. To make sure it's an, that we've got that in there as a, as an alternative.
Yeah, but you gotta, like I said, you gotta look at, allow the fire department to be more available, where it needs to his department. Another fire department, when you have to shuttle, depending on it, because again, it is, it's not the best available source of water, but it is, it is, it's a means to provide, same as the pond, it's a means to allow development to occur where you don't have city or county water system. It allows the development to occur. Fire goes and say, you have to meet a standard. And there's several standards out there. There's ISO, there's NFA, 1184, which is World Water Supply for the National Fire Protection Agency. We chose ISO because basically when the department attorney comes down to evaluate the fire departments, they use that standard. So it only makes sense to use that standard for the capacity of water flow that you need so that you're in line. So the charge rate stays with you. Obviously, if ISO says you need 1,000 gallons, and NFA says it's 5,000 gallons, and you're designing everything, the 5,000, you're not meeting the standard, so your charge rate's going to be a little higher for your citizens. So that's why in 2013, we adopted the UDO version, is James picked the ISO method as a standard so we'd be in line with that, and the fire departments did be evaluated.
And how often are they evaluated?
Five years.
And it's usually in a five to 10 year, 100 per year.
And it's a lot more manpower when you're shuffling that water to carry those lines? I mean, you got to keep running back out to, to water. If someone decides, I'm only really just questioning more on the, the, the smaller, lot of times the, the sub, the, the builder on the big ones can pass that cost along. But typically, I mean, do you have any idea what, what it costs to have a, a pond certified? To have it certified to meet the ISO requirements that you're discussing?
You're probably looking at a couple thousand dollars for engineering, and then the cost of digging the pond and sawing the sand pile and all that, for the road, the road surface. So you're talking 40,000 to 1,000 dollars. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gasping there.
I, I, I had a question, I wanted to backtrack. You had said the, the water tank, water trucks, they owe 250 gallons?
No, no. That's what they're certified to haul some of the fire departments.
Okay.
Minimum. That's based on ISO, they have to do that. They can do more if they, they get together and they, they hold an operation. You know, it's almost a perfect scenario. So when they do that, they've got everybody, they're all hands on deck, running for the, for the department and charts to say that, okay, you, you qualify for 5,000 gallons now. Your truck tankers have worked for 15,000, someone, 2,000, about, hit it. It's about a fire department.
Okay.
Tankers can run from a house, call from a thousand gallon of water to the first five hundred gallons.
Okay. And, and an average house fire, how many gallons, I know that's just an approximate, but how many gallons would you use in an average house fire?
Well, again, based on that ISO standard, you'd say 750 gallons per minute. I can't tell you exactly what Ryan would use on scene.
Wouldn't you?
Depending on what's in the house.
You'd run out of water pretty quick, wouldn't you?
We can, we, in recent instances where we have run out of water, has been in commercial structure, took residential structure on the mainland, we, we manage pretty well.
Okay.
With the burn or spot.
Because when you have a, when you have a water line, you have unlimited supply of water. You can hook up to a hydrant and pump as much as you need.
Right.
But in any of these cases, whether it's a pond or a, a water tank truck, you're limited on what, what it holds.
Any, any other questions?
I can finish, I can keep going with my-
Sure, yes.
-staff report recommendation. So, and one other thing I wanted to note is, there is a strike through of one word in part, 6.2.4a2, Fire Hydrants Required Section. The la, the last sentence of that section says, "The fire code official may authorize or require a deviation from this standard if, in the opinion of the fire code official, another arrangement more satisfactorily complies." There's a strike through of the word "more" there, I just wanted to point that out, with the intent or standards in this ordinance. So that, so that the determination doesn't necessarily mean that an alternative is more satisfactorily compliant, but that it's satisfactorily compliant and, in the, in the opinion of the fire code official. So, just wanted to point that language out. And, and to your point, Brian, about asking about the costs and things, it's a text amendment, it's a legislative decision, so you can weigh any factor in making your decision and determination. And so, "The advisability of amending the text of the ordinance is a matter committed to the legislative discretion of the Board of Commissioners and is not controlled by any one factor. In determining whether to adopt or deny this text amendment, the Board may weigh the relevance of and consider whether and the extent to which the proposed text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of, of the land use plan." This is all on page one of your memo. "It's not in conflict with the ordinance. It's required by changed conditions, addresses a demonstrated community need, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts in the ordinance, or would improve compatibility among uses and ensure efficient development within the county, that it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment, including, but not limited to, water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment." So those are, those are some factors that, that you may weigh. And in making a decision, the Board shall adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness that describes whether the, the decision is consistent with county adopted plans that are applicable, and explains why the decision is reasonable and in the public interest. So staff recommends approval of the request as submitted and suggests the following statement of consistency and reasonableness. That the text amendment is consistent with the goals and the policies and objectives of the 06, of the 2006 land use plan, including policy PS2, that the county shall support and encourage the development and improvement of firefighting services that enhance the security and safety of life and property, while resulting in the added benefit of lower property insurance rates. And then policy WS3, Creteck County endorses utilities extension policies that focus water and sewer services within existing developed areas and in nearby targeted growth areas identified as full service and limited service areas. That's one. Two, where development densities would make the provision of all public services more efficient. Three, where the land is particularly well-suited for development, and four, away from environmentally sensitive areas. Policy WS4, the county endorses utilities extension policies that avoid those parts of the county best suited for agriculture, and to protect farmland from development pressures bought about, brought about by such utilities. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it's consistent with the 2006 land use plan, and it is not in conflict with the provisions of the UDO, and it continues to allow limited development without the requirement for extension of county water lines in farmland and rural areas.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any further questions for Jenny or staff? Just before we go any further, just to get far off, Mr. Nees, you sound like you're kind of on the fence on whether this, are you in favor of this, or?
Well, I always worry about shuttling because you have to have volunteers, and you have to have the equipment. So it's, as I said, it's lesser of all, of all things we provide. Because we do have some areas where we have a fire, that's three, four miles away, that they're going to have to run that water back and forth to get to a rural pond that's located away. So anytime you're taking fire staff and you're putting them in, running back and forth with vehicles, there's some of those are narrow, there's deep dish lines, it just adds to the, and Ryan might speak more of this, turn the public, what his concerns are as a chief, if he, if he has to do this for. Is it a means to try to help people out? Yeah. And again, it's done throughout the state, rural areas, rural areas. But you got to have the people, you got to have the equipment. And expectations of people who are moving to our county are, they think they're getting like what they're getting at Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, that, you know, people are going to show up to find a fire, they're out there like that, and it's y, 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 and that don't happen. I have concerns with fire departments.
All right. Well, thank you.
This, this would allow you some discretion in, in as far as whether it's satisfactory arrangement, to use that shuttle. That, that you're not tied to it, just because it would be adopted into the ordinance, that you would have to say, okay, well, we've got shuttling in the ordinance, it's okay to do this. You would, you would look at each individual situation with a fire code.
Well, I would ask the chief, I would ask the chief of the department to give me a statement saying that if I call 9500 gallons per minute for this structure, I would ask him to say if he's able to do that and sign off on it.
And, and that would be the determinative factor as that. This is just an, an option to use, but it's not actually sewn insofar as its implementation for a particular.
No, I think there's some flexibility for, as, if I reference Little Currituck again, being qualified for 250 gallons. If somebody needs 500 gallons, then that means they only have to size their pond for 250 gallons because the fire department's going to bring the other 250. Does that make sense?
So they would still have to do the pond, just be a little small?
Yeah, because it would happen, you got to meet the flow. So if you need 1,000 gallons, and they're only going to give you 250 by shuttle, you got to come up with 750 somewhere else. Run a water line, put a pond in, put a tank in. We have a church on, on East Road, pretty similar area to Spurford. They're going to put a 4,000 gallon tank out back of it because there's no water on down East Ridge Road.
Can somebody think a well?
Probably would think a well is, again, get into the engineer, and will it be able to give the flows to pumps and all that. And most engineers are kind of shy away from it.
We have discussed, we have an administrative manual that has all of our applications and forms in it, that, that goes along with the ordinance and lays out processes. And we've discussed having forms that are very, that each fire chief would sign in a certain area to say, we, we can haul this amount of water and we're going to certify it, we're going to notarize it, and for this particular development, we can, we can provide this much, this many gallons per minute. And that, that's, could be discretionary too, depending on what area of the county you're in. And then also, as Bill said, each fire department is certified for a different amount.
Any more questions for staff? Well, Mr. Pointer, you're the only person we have signed up to speak, so come on up. Tell us, tell us all about it.
I'm Ryan Pointer. I live 4174 Carrick Hook Highway in Barco. Lived in Creteck pretty much my entire adult life. Been involved in volunteer fire department for almost 40 years. We have some concerns in, not just simply the ordinance, but in fire services as a whole in Creteck County, where staff have volunteers. The water, as they all refer to, is water shuttle from the Department of Insurance, our department, and Lower Currituck Fire Department, both receive certifications from the State Fire Marshal's office for what they refer to as a method three, that allows us to shuttle water and provide a higher water capacity in firefighting than just solely hydrants alone. The certification is something our departments worked on very hard, worked together. No single fire department can achieve this on their own. It takes the neighboring fire departments to auto aid and mutual aid agreements to accomplish this. It's also a certification that if things go wrong, we could lose. So it's not a guaranteed certification. We'll have to demonstrate this again sometime in the future, our capability to shuttle this much water, provide this much water. Living in a volunteer world, the wheels can fall off at any time. So, and it wouldn't have necessarily be our department at fault, it could be a neighboring department. There's a lot of things that, that can happen to affect this. So just wanted to kind of make sure you knew that this water shuttle certification is not an absolute guarantee. That doesn't mean that our departments are not going to continue to work hard and try to maintain this, but some things are beyond our control. I, as I said, I've lived in Creteck all my adult life, I've owned property in Creteck all my adult life. I understand, nothing aggravates me more, because the property that I own, I bought and paid, either myself or my family have bought and paid for. And when some party starts telling me that limiting what I can do on my property, it's annoying. But we've got to find the fine line to keeping people safe as well. In regards to simply digging a pond and achieving better rate for your insurance, it doesn't necessarily happen that way. If I can give you a little background, one of the things that kind of prompted our department to look into the method three to start with was a waterfront community in our fire district. Look, they, a good portion of this community is on Creteck Sound or Tolls Bay, and waterfront property. For the Department of Insurance, as far as our rating goes, any residence that falls within our district, within five miles of a fire station, and within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant, is covered under our rating. What the method three adds to that is an additional mile. It extends our district, the radio district out to six miles, and it kind of basically eliminates the 1,000-foot requirement from a hydrant. So when we got this method three certification, it covered this entire community under our insurance rating, that, like I said, a waterfront community on the Creteck Sound with all the water you could think of, didn't afford that to them. So we have seven, I believe it is, certified water points in our district, and they have to be approved by the Department of Insurance for us to utilize those for shuttling water. We have to maintain them, we have to back flush and backflow the, the dry hydrants and make sure they function when we need them to. That's just a little bit of background on the, on the water shuttle service that we provide.
All right. Well, Mr. Pointer, I want to thank you for your service, and I know you and the rest of the firefighters do a wonderful job here in the county, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
But is anyone else have any questions for Mr. Pointer?
You definitely have a concern with, with this, if I'm hearing you right.
Right, yes.
What, what is your, are, are you in favor of this? Are you not in favor of this?
I, I am, I can't say either way, I'm concerned. I'm concerned with the fact that y'all are basing the ordinance on something that could possibly go away in regards to our water shuttle certification. As far as requiring a property owner to dig a pond on their property, for the most part, it won't affect our department. And it won't change how the Department of Insurance views that residence as far as their homeowner's insurance and so forth is concerned. If they, if they fall within the service area that we cover now, within the six miles of one of our fire stations, then digging a pond in their yard will not change their insurance rate.
Any different than shuttling would make it, or?
As long as the residence is within our rated fire district, within the six miles, then them having a pond on their property wouldn't make a big difference, if I understand it correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Probably if you have a fire that wants to do it for more stuff.
Right.
Right. Alright.
We're gonna do everything we can do. And we, myself personally, I like to see property owners do what they like to do with their property.
Yes, sir, it seems like it's a...
We just need to find that fine line, make it work for everyone.
Alright, well, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Pointer?
Now, would you, the ponds that, would that make a whole lot more ponds that you have to certify? That would, I mean, would that make, with, of course, the volunteers?
As far as the fire rating and the Department of Insurance is concerned, yes. And as you were asking a while ago with a pond on your property and how much hose it would take and everything, we were talking about our fire engines weigh anywhere from 50,000 to 70,000 pounds. And we have to get within feasibly 20 feet of that dry hydrant standpoint. So it's got to be a pretty substantial path and ground for us to... And of course, when we start shuttling water, we're splashing water. So if it's not a well-maintained road, it's gonna turn into a mud pit and it's gonna really hamper operations as well.
But that would be a lot of certifications that you would...
It would be.
I mean, that's, there's no cap on how many that would be in a district?
Right.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have anything else, anything like that?
I think that's it for now.
Alright, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hang around just in case somebody has something else. Alright, does anyone else have anything? Does anyone else not signed up, wanna speak? I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion amongst the board?
I see both sides. This is the tough one.
Mr. Bass?
I see thinking.
I just think it puts a lot of responsibility on the volunteer fire and on the county. You know, because from what I'm hearing, you can have a pond, but they may need to augment that water supply with the shuttle service too. So you would have to provide, you've got cost in providing the shuttle service and in certifying the pond. Because isn't it right that the gallons have to be, you said something about...
Well, they can have ponds designed, holdable.
But they have to, it has to, they would have to do that. So somebody could do a pond that would be half of what you need. They could do that, you could use that, but you'd also have to shuttle on top of that. So you'd get, you'd have cost on both. There'd be cost on the homeowner and on the county.
I just, I don't know. I just, I just think it, this works to me like roads and, I mean, this is, this is facilities. This is county facilities.
Which sounds like we're putting more on our volunteer.
On our county, yeah, on our county.
What do you do now? I mean, if someone's got a pond now, do you, I mean, what happens right now?
They have to have a pond the size...
It's required.
That they require. The pond has to be...
So if somebody had a pond, or let's say they had a water source along their property, like a large ditch, you still can't go over there and just pop your hose in there to get water, correct?
Well, you can't use that as a certified...
Right.
Not certified.
Where they get water, where they get water.
But you would.
Absolutely.
I'll give you an instance, they have a fire down Water Acres, and there's no water down there. An acre of water, it's like, well, it's 10, you know, trucks sat down.
But we're still, we still... They get water from the sand and all that, yes.
It's not an approved source, water supply. And that's where you get an ISO, you gotta have an approved water source.
The problem kicks in on that third, building a third house. You've got to have an approved water source, which is either the water line with a fire hydrant or a pond. You have to dig within a certain distance of the structure.
So right now, that's all about...
Obviously, the water line is the answer, but the areas where people, I mean, imagine the cost of running a water line two miles down the road for three to four houses. It's not feasible for a contractor to develop. So the fire code allows this pond, a tank, a system to be an alternative supply for water being on site to be able to fight a fire. Obviously, ponds are not the answer because it becomes a nightmare for the fire department, it becomes a big... But it is a means to allow development to occur.
So a homeowner could have an above-ground tank of water?
Yes, yes.
That would, that would make more sense to me.
What about pools?
And the cost.
And what about pools?
Then you're looking at certifying, getting it certified for that use. The water park down south of the county is able to, they were able to get their pool, as long as they maintain it around and keep it full of water as part of their water supply. They do have fire hydrants on location, there's just not enough water out of the fire hydrants down southern part of the county to make up the fire flow. So the pool that's at the water park is, but if we're talking about a pond and having water supply, it's a combination system. There's a dry hydrant, if you ever go down to the water park, there's a dry hydrant in that little section there that kinda puts some dishes around. But it's there for the fire department to have access to the drain pool. But you get into the certifications of doing it and getting engineers to say, okay, I got an underground pool. How is that, that pool's always gonna have water in it? You know, it can't, above ground pool, people take them down. Can't have a blow pool from Walmart and say it's a water supply. You know, so you gotta have a true reason. The fire ponds don't want to head out and maintain these things and, because they are paying the net and volunteers, you know, they do everything they can and, you know, you add a little more to them with this pond open again. I cannot deny the developer that right to put a pond on property. I can't make a home where there aren't... That's where you get into that formula and the number of houses that says, once you do this, you're gonna run the water line regardless. But if you keep it under that, now you have a water line, you still need to provide something.
Because you got, you know, property rights are all well and good. With rights come responsibilities. It's not just, you can do what you want to with your property, but you're responsible for doing certain things to do what you want to do with it. So they go, they go hand in hand, yeah.
So right now, the liability falls back on the owner. I mean, you...
They have to provide some means.
Right now.
We don't have available, they gotta provide means. And we've had people dig ponds and do what they gotta do to put their houses in those developments and things like that. And some people, you know, they have a pond, it's a good selling feature, fish and things, you know. Again, it's not the best, it's not the best source of, it's a, you know, the way to provide development without acquiring any work, work, you don't have work. Carrick County has water supply, it has work, you know, it has water lines, but there's parts of the county that don't have it. And that disallows the development to happen by using ponds and these things.
Alright. Well, we are at the point, unless anyone else has any questions or discussions for anybody, to open for a motion. What, what we're thinking. Does anyone else have anything else you want to talk about?
We can make a motion to not adopt.
Yeah, either way. Or you could make changes to it if you wanted to.
Well, I don't really... I don't have the expertise to...
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just saying, you're allowed to if you want to.
I'm gonna make a motion to not adopt the text amendment to the UDO to allow, you know, allowing use of water shuttling as a means of fight fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by the county water system and revise in references in UDO Chapter four, five, six. I could care less about the fire marshal, the fire code official. I'm certainly willing to adopt that change, you know. Can I, can I split a motion like that, guys?
Is that something you really want adopted, or would you... Do you want us to change that part if we were to deny the other part? Just the language of fire marshal to fire code?
That would be the discretion of the board. That would be fine with staff to go ahead and make that change because that is reflected in the fire... That's the way the fire, fire code has it and not fire marshal. The fire code has fire code official, but we would need that very specific in your motion. Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I was gonna get easy. Because I didn't have to, I didn't have to list all those other things, you know.
Item two has the strike through of fire marshal replacing fire code official in Chapter four, five, and six.
Okay.
So any of those in item one that are struck through will be picked up in item two.
Okay, so, yeah, alright. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny the text amendment to the UDO of allowing water shuttling as a means of fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by the county water system. And, but adopt, I make a motion with that, to adopt item two. Chapter four, use standards, chapter five, development standards, and chapter six, subdivisions and infrastructure standards are amended by striking through all references to fire marshal and replacing with fire code official. In denying the text amendment for the water shuttling services as means of fire flow water supply, I believe it is in the best interest of the county that, to deny this text amendment in that assets and that we don't really have the means to, at this point, to, to do this. If we can, if you know what I mean.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Did something else need to be said, I'm sorry, about the six period, two period, four period, A two regarding striking the "more" in the last sentence?
If you want to do that, you could make that motion.
Okay, alright. And Jenny, talk to me about that, I wanna make sure that's just so...
It's the strike through of the word "more" instead of...
In which item is that?
That's in item, item two, last, last sentence.
If we're recommending denial of that, does that need to be changed?
Right, of course. Right.
See, I'm showing, item two is the fire marshal and replacing fire code official is what I'm showing as item two.
Yeah, I'm saying under item one, it would be 6.2.4, Part two, the last line.
Item one, 6.2.4.
And your fire hydrant's required?
Oh, okay.
That last sentence?
Okay, okay. But I will make a motion to approve in item one, section A two, the fire code official may authorize or require deviation from this standard if, in the opinion of the fire code official, another arrangement satisfactory complies with the intent or standards in this ordinance.
But we're not approving it.
But we're not approving it, that's why I'm a little confused on this because...
I'm think that, we may not need to address that part.
No.
Just the changing of the fire marshal to fire code official, I believe, is all we really need to address. If we're recommending denial, if we were gonna recommend approval of it, that "more" would need to be addressed and struck out. That word "more." Because if you're not adopting anything, I don't know that that needs to be changed, except for the word "marshal."
You wanna do that again?
Any, any advice on that one?
I mean, it's up to you, I think, I think you're right. I think the motion may have to be a condit, like an approval with condition.
I think the only concern of changing that word would be if it were being adopted.
Can I make a adjustment?
Yeah.
So under item B one, get rid of the approved water supply show, the water supply show, strike that and approve an alternative means, approve by fire code official, just leave me the option to figure out fire flow or we got to deal with fire departments. That would leave me, if they don't wanna meet one of those two categories, then that alternative means they would have to present something. Again, if somebody wants a residential sprinkler in the house. So that could be a meat, an alternative means that would help out with the...
Okay.
Another one would be, again, shuttle. If I talk to the chief, the chief says, hey, we got three houses going up on this little road, I'm okay, I can, I can play with fire.
Now, tell me which parts you would, you would recommend changed again.
I would say this. Item B one.
Allow...
Item C, or I mean, item B, strike out fire department, the water supply. And just leave D the way it is and let the alternative, that might be the best course of action with this.
It sounds like basically it's just more at the discretion of the fire code official, but would still allow water shuttling, which maybe isn't the motion that you're trying to have.
So it would take that, it would just leave it open to you, to whatever was presented. You could determine whether that was satisfactory to you or not. As you said, maybe a sprinkler system versus shuttling or something. Okay.
Yeah, because there's a lot going on here.
I think the most...
I, I think the, the most concerning for me is to put so much more pressure on a volunteer fire department. That's.
Me too.
That, that's the only thing that really concerns me. But I, I would like to see families to be able to.
Sure, sure, sure.
So there's a part of me that wants to approve it, but I also want to make sure that the fire department is not.
I've seen a lot of people have to do the ponds that don't want to do them. Okay. Well, right now, you've made a motion, you started with a motion, so.
Yeah, let me, let me.
Do you wanna withdraw that for the moment?
Yeah, let me withdraw that because it seems to me that if.
Okay.
The, the amendment we're voting on basically saying allows use of water shuttling as a means of meeting fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by the county water system. And references in U D O four, five, six, from fire marshal to fire code official to be consistent with the North Carolina fire code. That's the, that's what we're voting on. Uh, to whether we want to allow use of the water shuttling as a means of meeting fire flow water supply requirements for land not serviced by the county water system and then to change the, the, from fire marshal to fire code official. But I just, I think by doing that, then we kinda do, by just making a motion to not do that, we sort of, we deal with everything else within here because that, that's what's in front of us, isn't it? That's really what's in front of us is the water shuttling.
Yes.
And the, the changing fire marshal to fire code official. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're voting on. And then the other, um.
Just the language that goes along.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I get where basically you reach where something can be as good as it is. It doesn't have to be better. That's where, right Jenny, that's where that more comes in. That, because basically something, as long as it meets the standards, it doesn't have to be better.
And that section is actually on county water, that, that strike through, the fire hydrants, the fire section, that's county water.
Okay, yeah. All right, yeah. Under general provisions. All right, I'm, I'm gonna give it a try again.
Okay.
Okay.
Lori, anything?
Well, you do, you, your motion has been seconded, so, um, you essentially need to retract that motion.
And I will retract my original motion.
All right.
So I'm gonna make a motion to not adopt the text amendment to the U D O allowing use of water shuttling as a means of meeting fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by the county water system. But that's, I'm making a motion to not adopt that. But I am making a motion to revise references in the U D O, chapter four, five, and six, from fire marshal to fire code official to be consistent with the North Carolina fire code. In addition, I'm making a motion to, to adopt and change, or to change the language in item one, six point two four, fire protection standards. Number two, fire hydrants required. All developments serviced by the county water supply system shall include a system of fire hydrants sufficient to provide adequate fire protection for the buildings located or intended to be located within the, the development. Fire hydrants shall be located in a manner that ensures hydrants are spaced at a maximum of one thousand linear feet apart and every portion of lot frontage is within five hundred linear feet of the hydrant. The fire code official may authorize or require a deviation from this standard in the opinion of the fire code official. Another arrangement satisfactory, satisfactorily complies with the intent or standards in this ordinance. And this has to do with the fire hydrants requirement. So my motion is to deny the text amendment or the water shuttling service to approve in the U D O four, five, and six, changing from fire marshal to fire code official to be consistent with the North Carolina fire code. And to, and to change in item one, six point two four, fire protection standard, section two, fire hydrants. In the opinion of the fire code official, another arrangement, striking the word more satisfactorily complies with the intent or standards in this ordinance.
And then a statement of reasonableness and consistency?
I always forget that, don't I?
What about the sentence Mr. Nunes recommended on B number one?
Allowable sources.
To strike out fire department mobile water supply?
And that's under section?
B.
B, allowable sources?
Number one, allowable sources, and then B under that. And just leave the language that it would be approved by the fire code official? Is that still necessary?
Let's see, let's read that.
I, I know. I think it's covered by what you.
I think it is.
Said here already.
Yeah. Because that's really not.
We're, we're, we're basically.
That's not what we're.
Denying it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're, okay. And also that this, this meets, uh, these motions meet a statement of consistency and reasonable, reasonableness as noted in item two, or item three, I'm sorry, item three.
I just wanna know how that affects the, um, portion of the water supply B, water supply for fire protection. Where, uh, we had an alternative means approved by a fire code official. I think Mr. Nunes had, had mentioned the possibility of sprinkler system, residential sprinkler system or what have you. That there may be some alternatives other than the water shuttling.
Mm-hmm.
Are we precluding that with?
Well, I think the water, water shuttling is the only thing that's in front of us, isn't it?
That's not how I see it.
Yeah. I mean, because that's what it basically says by adding the file, uh, basically, um, at this time in the code, the water shuttling isn't, isn't, in the U D O, isn't defined, I guess.
He does not have that option. Water shuttling, he is limited to, um, is, under the allowable sources, A. Uh, currently, um, that's what he's limited to, the fire ponds, canals, wells, cisterns, above ground storage tanks, or water lines. And a combination of those features, um, that, with the wording of the U D O right now, he does not have.
He, water shuttling is not in the U D O right now.
So that's, that's really the only thing that's.
That's what we're voting on.
Uh, that's a major point of that, of this, is allowing that water shuttling, but then also, um, that alternative means approved by the fire code official, which would allow, um, Mr. Nunes right now. Um, but the fire code official flexibility to potentially maybe a residential sprinkler system or any combination of those things listed above and something else. We're back to the residential. That's the only thing I can come up with right now that's not listed as a residential sprinkler system.
Okay.
The problem again, the shutdown gives some assistance.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be, you know, like I said, all the things to calculate in there.
Well, I guess my motion is just based on, you know, I just don't, I think it's gonna put a lot of responsibility on the, you know, on the volunteer fire department. It just, it just adds another. You know, I would rely on your expertise to determine.
And you're doing so now.
Yeah.
You're so now. Give me that, give me the option to add that into the mix. And so be able to use my determination of what I think is right.
No, no.
And be able to, the fire chief can be able to say, I can do it.
So at this point, if someone puts a sprinkler system in, they're not gonna be passing this? Is that, they both not?
Not required, but they offered it, how was it?
No, what I'm saying is though, if they didn't have the pond, the canal, well, cistern, or above ground storage tank, or water lines, but they put a sprinkler system in, because that's, that doesn't say that here.
It don't have, that, that alternative means.
Covers everything.
Covers.
But is alternative means in there now, or is that being added?
It's being added.
It's being added.
Yeah, so that would have to be, right, that's not in there.
That, that's kind of my point on that.
Right, right.
Question with the sprinkler system.
So in the motion, that would have to be added in then?
They could do a sprinkler system, maybe make a house out of, out of such, metal, or no, not a faucet. You do a center block building with metal frame. Even if the fire hazard in a building like that is, is minimal. So you, there's alternatives out there you can do. Maybe get more leniency to say, okay, yeah, we don't need to provide a thousand gallons because your house is not gonna burn or it's, it's, you know. You have stuff inside it that's gonna burn, which, again, fire truck and shovel, you can deal with that.
Okay. So we can just put in the wording alternative means and that would cover anything?
That, is it in there now?
No, she, Lori just said alternative means.
But the shutdown does give another option, gives another option to say, hey, talk to the fire chief.
Well, by, by leaving that alternative means in there, that can cover the shutdown, right?
Yeah.
But that gives you a little more latitude. Right? I would think so.
Yeah, that's what it would seem to me.
Okay.
Now, is, is the shutdown covered by the B fire form, mobile water supply approved by a fire code official? Was that the shuttling language?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we were.
So we eliminated B and, and continue with C or convert that to C to any combination above and then C, an alternative means approved by a fire official, fire code official, and that would cut what we're looking at?
I think so. I think that's what Mr. Nunes was getting at a while ago.
Yeah.
If we were to approve this, but remove that B, it does away with the man, the water shuttling being and just leaves it up to an alternative means and that alternative can be.
That's.
All right, well, I think y'all, yeah, I think y'all have got, yeah. So I'm, I'm gonna let y'all make a motion because I think y'all have got it right there. No, I do. I, I, because I think that covers everything.
Starting to see it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I just, you take a lot off. Breathing my own carbon by not, dioxide too much lately with his mask.
Okay.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion and I'm gonna, uh, acquiesce to, uh, my other board members to, to make a motion.
Can't we basically go with what Mr. Bass said and just add in the?
Well, he did.
He had recommended denial, so we would need to approve it.
Okay.
But remove that line, that line B that states fire department mobile water supply approved by a fire code official. But leave, leave A, C, and D, so they would end up getting rearranged. That, I think that's where we're at.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. Now somebody put in form of a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, P B two zero dash zero seven, Currituck County text amendment, alternative water supply for fire flow planning boards today. Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter four, use standards, chapter five, development standards, chapter six, subdivision and infrastructure standards. Item one, chapter six subdivision, infrastructure standards is amended by adding the following underlying language and deleting the strike through language. Uh, six two point four, general provisions, fire lanes with streets and right of ways provide insufficient access for firefighter unobstructed fire lanes with a minimum width complying with the current adopted version of the North Carolina State Fire Code shall be provided. In no instance shall this standard waive the requirement for the primary drive aisle constructed in accordance with section five point six point eight, primary drive aisles when required by this ordinance. Fire hydrants required, item two, fire hydrants required. All developments serviced by the county water supply system shall include a system of fire hydrants sufficient to provide adequate fire protection for the buildings located or intended to be located within the development. Fire hydrants shall be located in a manner that ensure hydrants are spaced a maximum of one thousand linear feet apart and every portion of the lot frontage, frontage is within five hundred linear feet of a hydrant. The fire code official strike through marshal shall be authorized or code of deviation from the standard if the opinion of the fire code official, another arrangement strike through more satisfactorily complies with the intent or the standards of this ordinance. Number three, fire hydrant location. Unless an alternative placement is specified by the state building code or the planning director in, in consultation with the fire code official, fire hydrant shall be placed six feet behind the curb or within ten feet of the pavement edge of a street without curbing. Required hose connections unless otherwise specified are, all fire hydrants shall have the following hose connections. Two, two and a half, two and one half inch hose connection at least twenty one and a half inches above ground level and one, four and one half inch connection. All hose connections shall be sized in accordance with the national standards. Five, water service main size, water main service fire hydrant shall be at least eight inches in diameter. Six, water supply source location, water supply source location shall clearly be marked for location purpose with a marker of suitable size and reflective characteristics for daylight, nighttime, and inclement weather operation. Strike B in its entirety. Item two, chapter four, use standards, chapter five, development standards, and chapter six subdivision, infrastructure standards are amended by striking through all references to fire marshal and replacing with fire code. Item three, statements of consistency and reasonableness. The requested text amendment is consistent with the goals, policy, and objectives of the two thousand six land use plan, including policy. P P two, Currituck County shall continue to implement a policy of adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development. Such facilities may include, but not limited to, water supply, school capacity, park, and open space needs, firefighting capacity, and law enforcement. Policy W S three, Currituck County endorses utilities extension policies that focus water and sewer services. One, within existing development areas and in nearby targeted growth areas identified as full service and limited to service areas. Two, where development density would make the provision for all public service more efficient. Three, where the land is particularly well suited for development, and four, away from environmentally sensitive areas such as areas with extensive wetlands or the northern beaches of the Outer Banks. Policy W S four, Currituck County endorses utility extension policies that avoid these parts of the county best suited for agricultural and to protect farmland from development pressures brought about by such utilities. Exceptions to this policy may include extensions for major economic development initiatives and extensions to address imminent public health problems or related to environmental hazard. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is consistent with the two thousand six land use plan and it is not in conflict with the provisions of the U D O. It continues to allow limited development without the requirement for extension of county water lines in farmland and rural areas. Item four, the provision of this ordinance are serviceable and if any of its provisions or any sentence clause or paragraph. or any sentence clause or paragraph or the adoption thereof to any person or circumstances shall be held unconstitutional or violate the law of the state of North Carolina by any court of competent jurisdiction. The decision of such court shall not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application.
I don't, I think you're good.
I, I need to-
I do want to clarify one thing on B.
B.
You said to strike through B in your motion.
I did.
In its entirety, if I'm correct.
Is that what we said?
I, I believe, I would suggest that we are leaving B, but number one, under B, allowable sources, the letter B under that, we strike out.
Oh. Do tell me, I do not-
No, you don't have to read the whole thing again.
Because that is, that is-
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
That, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
The entire heading of B, the, the capital B, we're leaving water supply for fire protection when not serviced by county water supply system.
Yes, I am so sorry.
Number one, allowable sources, under that, we have A, B, C, and D, and we want to strike through the B of that.
B, Fire Department Mobile Water Supply approved by the fire code official.
Leaving A, C, and D to be rearranged.
Yes.
There was one other thing, I think, I, I heard, under Item 1, 6.2.4, A2. The last sentence, I think after the word, the fire code official, I think you said "shall," and it should be "may." And I don't know if that mattered.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
But I think we're good.
Okay.
You just straightened it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
You corrected that.
That's what I thought, yeah.
All right. I make a motion to approve based on the-
That was perfect.
Keeping B, striking, keeping paragraph B, but striking sub-paragraph B, fire code, mobile water supply approved by the fire code, and I'm sorry, as it shall.
And we leave the other ones.
Correct.
Okay.
You guys got that?
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? We, motion passes. Cherie, I apologize on all of that. Lot of notes there, sorry about that. Like I say, first meeting back, so we're getting into it.
We're a little rusty.
I think we worked through that well, though, so that was very, very good, thank you.
Brian, thank you for-
I'm still, yeah. You're welcome.
All right, well, I think that is all we have. And so is there any announcements anyone would like to make?
I have a few announcements. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your, your flexibility during this time, your willingness to come out in a very uncertain situation. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate your responses when I've reached out about, about our schedule. Because we have several cases, a backlog, if you would, of planning cases, we've got a little bit of a different schedule coming up in June. I went, I think I may have touched on this in an email, but I wanted to, here in front of everyone, go, go over our upcoming schedule for the month of June, and just make you aware of some things and make some notes. On June 1st, there will be a combined planning board and board of commissioners work session on the Flora Farm PDR, and that will be at the Extension Auditorium, the Cooperative Extension Auditorium, near the Y, MCA. If you remember, this was, I think it was, we went under the COVID stay-at-home order a day or two before we were supposed to have that, the work session back in, I think, March 18th. So this work session will be an opportunity for you all to, in a, in a more informal setting, for you all to ask questions, become informed of this Flora Farm Planned Unit Development Residential Rezoning Request. It is very similar to the FOST that you all considered last year, and that was a lot of information for a board member to take into in one night, consider it, and, and be asked to act on it, to make a decision about it. So we thought a work session might be a better way to, to start giving you some information so that you can digest it, and, and if there's issues that you want to see addressed that are not addressed, and either, you know, that we can make sure any, any questions are answered during the business session. So please make sure, see if you can attend, I hope you all can attend. It will be at, once again, the Cooperative Extension Auditorium to allow us a little bit more space because with planning board members, board of commissioners, staff for both of those boards, the applicant, his consultant team, we're probably gonna be, already be up to about 30 people, or right around that. And, and you can see here, we're very limited in space. So please try to attend that.
Lori, what time was that?
That's gonna be at 4:00.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And then the regular business session of the board of commissioners will be later that evening back here at 6:00. So, and that's where they will consider the, the flood amendment, the effective date of the flood, flood maps text amendment. On June 9th is your regularly scheduled planning board. That is a very robust agenda. There will be three rezonings on that agenda, and three or four text amendments? There'll be a total of seven items. And, and one of those text amendments has several different, it's not, several different things that we're addressing, so it's not as straightforward as the flood, the effective date of the flood maps, unfortunately. So, and if, there are several items on there that we project would be on a June 22nd board of commissioners meeting, if you, if, if the planning board so chooses to act on all of those, all of those planning items. So it may be, the agenda may be robust enough that we go into the late hours of the evening, or if, at the discretion of the board, and the, and the chairman of the board may recess that meeting and reconvene later in the week. So kind of keep that in mind as your, your schedule is set for the, that second week in June. You know, this went, this meeting went in an hour and 40 minutes, and it was some fairly straightforward language, but it was a good discussion, right? So who knows how long, you know, we, especially rezoning applications. We'll hear those first to get those out of the way. So the June 9th, then like I said, the board of commissioner, and that, once again, will be held in the Extension Auditorium again to allow us more space. We have three different applicants for the three different rezonings, with staff, with board members, and any public that wants to come out. We, we just need the extra space.
So the June 9th is gonna be-
June 9th again will be at the Extension Auditorium, the Cooperative Extension Auditorium. And then the 22nd would be the board of commissioners meeting, where most of your planning items that you, that you considered on June 9th will be heard. That meeting has been tentatively scheduled to, once again, be at the Cooperative Extension Auditorium. And I think that's all my meetings for you all for this month. If you have any questions about the day, did I?
The June 22nd will be the board of commissioners.
The June 22nd will be the board of commissioners acting on your planning items if you would like to, to tune in, attend.
All right. That, is that, is that all you got?
I think that's all I have right now.
All right. Well, I, I just wanted to say I'm glad to be back and see all of y'all. But to thank you and staff for all of your hard work in getting all of this set up for us tonight, and the spacing everything out, I see you really had to put extra into it, so thank you.
You're welcome, and I, I appreciate you all. I, I know different people have different levels of anxiety or concern about this, this issue, but I do appreciate you all coming out and being willing to, to take part in public meetings. I think we're gonna have more people attend, especially on the June 9th and, and the work session, so just be aware of that. So I do appreciate that, and I know, I know we've all been throwing a curveball with this, and so thanks for being-
Yes.
Being adaptable and flexible.
And as, as well, thank you, so. Anything else we forgot? All right, well, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.